Hello. Thank you very much. Welcome to the special council meeting of the 11th of August 2022. The meeting is 1:35pm. I call in attendance. I'll just double check if Council Island is available.
I am on, I am online.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And Council Island did have permission to be at a council meeting on this day to be dialed in?
I didn't have it for the special meeting. I didn't know there was going to be one. I only asked for the committee meetings this morning. So I'm happy whichever way it has to go, but...
So would you like to move that you'd be given permission? Well, I'll move that, sorry. Oh, you're permitted for...
I please have permission.
To be, to be, come in, be part of this meeting via an audio link? Do I have a second?
I've got you on team. I've got you on team.
On via Teams?
Yes.
I'm just letting Vicky write this up. Council Island?
Okay.
Thank you. That Council Island be permitted to attend the meeting via an audio link, which is obviously Teams. I'll move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Johnic. All those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous in the room. Thank you very much, Council Island.
Thank you.
We have full attendance of everyone in this meeting. I'll ask Council Kunselman to do an acknowledgement to country.
Thank you, Chair. Ipswich City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we are gathered, acknowledging our gratitude that we share this land today, but also acknowledging the cost of that sharing, and our hope that we can move to a place of justice and partnership together, and we welcome opportunities for further engagement.
Thank you very much, Council Kunselman. Council Millian may lead us into prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, grant that we who seek to serve you in the affairs of this council may have wisdom in our deliberations, the guiding of your hand in our works, and the grace to serve together to advance the prosperity of our city. Amen.
Thank you, Council Millian. I've no apologies or leave of absence. Are there any declarations of interest in the matter on the agenda?
Thanks, Mayor. In accordance with Section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I, councillor Andrew Fechner, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in the following matters relating to the Nicholas Street Precinct: Nicholas Street Precinct Investment Strategy; Procurement; Venue Cinema Tenancy; Procurement Tender Consideration Plan to vary 13245 Ipswich Central Civic Project. The nature of my declarable conflict of interest are my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room while the matter is discussed and voted on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Fechner. Any other declarations of interest? Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
In accordance with Section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I, councillor Jacob Madsen, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in Item 6.1, Item 6.2, and Item 6.3. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is among the executive of the Ipswich Trade Soul and Labour Day Committee, and our building the Ipswich Trade Soul is immediately adjacent to a lot of this CBD redevelopment by council. As a result of that conflict of interest, I will leave the meeting room while the matter is considered and voted on.
Thank you very much. Any other declarations of interest? We'll then move on to officer's reports, which is 6.1. We have Items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3, which will contain, most of their attachments are confidential, and I would propose that we move into a closed session so we can discuss those three items, and then come out of them, and I guess then go into our normal moving, seconding, and going through that. So I move into, I move that we move into closed session in accordance with Section 254J3G of the Local Government Regulations of 2012. The meeting moving to closed session to discuss Items 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, which are all for the Nicholas Street Precinct matters. I call for a second for that. Thank you, councillor Doyle. We'll move on that matter. May I please raise your hand? Thank you. And it's unanimous in the room. And Council Island, how do you vote?
Affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now move into closed session.
Thank you and welcome back. We had an adjournment, sorry, we went into closed session to address some commercial and confidence matters. So we're back here, we're back at item 6.1, which is the Nicola Street Precinct Investment Strategy. I'd like to highlight that, as people would know, at the committee meeting, that recommendations C and D were added at that meeting, so they have carried across to this special meeting. So I will move recommendations A through to D. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Would anyone like to ask the development council officers any questions? No? Is there any discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes, councillor Ireland?
I would really like a report on the borrowing capacity of Ipswich City Council. I know that Mr Madigan said that we'd be looking for grants, but I really would like to know what our borrowing capacity is for the Ripley PDA, please.
I'm just going to seek advice from the CEO.
I was wondering whether we wanted to ask for any comment from our CFO, or alternatively, you can just consider that request as a... Yeah, as a recommendation that you wish to consider as a council?
Okay. So if we were going to put recommendation E, councillor Ireland, how would you like to word that?
That I would like a report on council's borrowing capacity for the Ripley PDA. After we've finished with the CBD, I guess.
So I'm just reading it back out because Vicky's typing this up.
Apologies, Chair, may I correct myself?
Yes.
Yes. Because of the way that, just as councillor Ireland has worded that in relation to a matter that's actually not on the agenda for this special council meeting. Only matters that are on the agenda for this special council meeting, and I'm happy to be corrected if there are others that have different advice, can be resolved or considered resolved in this meeting.
Does that mean that councillor Ireland could put it forward as I notice a motion for another meeting?
All right, can I change it then to, could I seek council's advice on the future borrowing capacity for the CBD?
V is just typing this up, I'll read it out when it's done. Is it councillor Ireland? So just to repeat, I think what you've got there, we've got here that council provide advice on the future borrowing capacity for the CBD?
Yes, that'll be great, thank you.
Are you okay with that? I'm just checking with the CEO.
Yeah, just going to the recommendations of the report itself, just for a moment if I can.
Yep, take your time. Thank you. As the, it's technically fine with the CEO, as the mover, I'm happy to add that amendment. As the second of councillor Doyle, you're happy to have that amendment?
Thank you, Mayor, yes.
Yes. Thank you very much, councillor Ireland.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we now have recommendations A through to E. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. In the room, it's unanimous. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Affirmative, thank you very much. And carried. I'll move on to item 6.2, which is the procurement of venue cinema tenancies. This is a report concerning the procurement. And recommendation of a lessee to operate cinema in the venue located at 163 Brisbane Street, Ipswich. And its recommendations A through to E as written. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this particular matter? No? In that case, I will move recommendation 6.2, A through to E. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? Thank you, councillor Tully.
I think it's a typo in paragraph D.
You are correct. It should be at.
At, correct. You're correct too.
My apologies, no councillor Milligan. My apologies, I should have carried that over. Councillor Milligan also noticed that at the committee meeting.
You're smarter than I thought.
That's... Oh, councillor Tully!
No, that's a compliment coming from me.
I'm sure he meant it... I'm happy to correct councillor Tully's thinking.
What was that?
I'm happy to correct councillor Tully's thinking.
Okay. Thank you. So that was in recommendation D. The word A, just before recommendations, should be at recommendations A, B and C. Any other discussion? No? In that case, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item 6.3, which is the procurement tender consideration plan to vary contracts, contract 13245 for Ipswich Central Civic Project. As I discussed in the closed session, I'll just change the name of that contract. Instead of 45, it should be 54. So I'd like to put it forward recommendation E. Which states that contract number 13245, stated in the heading, recommendations A, B and C, and throughout the report and attachments, be changed to 13254. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the development council officers on this matter? No? In that case, I'll move recommendations A through to E. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. And before we close, on behalf of council, I would like to thank councillor Marnie Doyle for her steady hand and drive and love of the Ipswich Central area. She has been diligent and tenacious in leading our council for the best possible outcome for our residents here. We are fortunate to have a council of her calibre and background that has brought her 25 years of institutional banking to full use for the benefits of our residents. So thank you councillor Doyle for leading the council for what is quite a momentous day in moving forward for our council. Thank you. And with that, I'll close the meeting at 2.40.
Sorry, Mayor, the other two councillors will need to come back in.
Oh, my apologies. Okay, we better wait for the other two councillors.
And I apologise for referring to them as the other two, our colleagues.
Colleagues, respected colleagues. I think the bell's been hit. We can't close without you. Was councillor Fichtner out there? Do you know? I'll do one more buzz if that's okay and then... Okay, in that case, thank you very much councillor Deppi Mayfield for coming back. I want to now close the meeting at 2.15pm. Thank you very much.